Okay.
I think it just ended.
Okay, I would like to call to order the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting for Tuesday, February 28th to order at 7:02 PM. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for February 23. I know people commented. Are there any other edits people wanted to make?
The only changes I made on there was Lorraine had a couple minor ones and then Pat had a minor one.
I have nothing. I have no changes.
You didn't have an amendment?
I had a...
Last time.
I didn't, I don't think I weighed in.
Yeah, I, the changes was, I was, Pat reported on the board of...
That's what it was, yeah. It wasn't...
Wasn't Pat, I made a change.
It wasn't Pat saying it, it was... Any other discussion on the minutes?
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Motion by Lisa, second by Pat. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the public comment period. It's a time for anybody who's joining us either in person or online who wants to comment on anything that's not already on the agenda tonight. Carla?
Hi, I'm Carla Marso. I'm here as an observer for the community party.
And just so you know, I told Brad there was really no need for him to show up.
Okay.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I'll move to close the public comment period.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Second by Lisa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the really meat of the discussion tonight is a continuation of our discussion from last meeting, and that's discussion of the solar array draft law. And that is just Planning Board reviewing draft law to propose to the trustees once we get to that point. So I know that we had a discussion last week. Oh, and thank you Carolyn for being here too again.
I know that you're the observer anyway, but thanks for being here.
So, at the last meeting, we ended up with a couple of action items. I was going to reach out to Tony, I did, I just haven't heard back yet. And I know the big thing was really Mike going through and seeing what items we could take out of there that are just kind of referenced elsewhere in law and having them here would be repetitive. So I know that Lisa made some comments on it, and Carolyn made some comments on it. I don't know if Mike, you wanted to start, you did the bulk of the...
I basically, when I went through it, a lot of it, it thinned out a lot because I went from four tiers to two tiers automatically. So, a lot of it, as I looked at it, I didn't really put, I took out the items that were already pretty much mentioned in the rest of the code. Anything that has to do with what is required for a special permit, that's already covered in the code. And I tried to simplify tier one and tier two to cover everything. Now, there are, when you get into tier two, yes, you could, you could probably go a little further if you want. It's up to you for, like what Carolyn had mentioned, large scale projects. But how I looked at it was, you have to come to the planning board anyway. At that point, we can decide what is going to be required, or we could actually have a, a solar checklist, so to speak, almost like I have a special permit checklist for many solar projects that, if any items are applicable on this, they need to provide that information. Or you could actually put it in the law. That's up, that's up to you guys. Depends on how repetitive you really want to be with the code.
Yeah. And I had asked Carolyn, or I'm sorry, Lisa, everyone here, I had asked Natalie, you know, is it okay if we, you know, if there's something in here that says, hey, you need a special permit? And then they had all this extra stuff about, you know, all the requirements for a special permit, if we take that out because it's elsewhere in its law, is that okay? So, just wanted to make sure that we didn't, obviously, it would be great if it was as straightforward in village law as possible without taking away, you know, anything from the planning board being able, or the trustees being able to enforce it, or making it open to some weird interpretation since that's happened to us before. So, I think, I would hope everyone's in agreement, in agreement that as simple as we can make it, you know, great, as long as we don't end up in kind of similar situations, so...
The only thing is, that a lot of people, well, I think this kind of thing is a little more sophisticated. I mean, this is, you know, a different kind of installation than something, but I think in a lot of cases, you don't want to say, oh, just refer to the old code because they don't know what the heck it's all about. But in this case, if, if we do that, Mike is going to see it first before it even gets to us. So he will kind of preemptively get them on the right place. But, yeah, that's the only thing. And I guess the thing that I'm not understanding because, is this uniform code, that form that, you know, Brent talked about having...
Big comment, Solar Permit.
Yes, that seems to be key in terms of really making it just really clear. One of the things that I looked at was the town of Ithaca. And that was, because I thought, all right, they're right adjacent, they're not as big as the city and all of that kind of stuff. And theirs was, theirs is long, and I would like to not have it be as long if possible. But, you know, I just wanted to be sure that some of the things they talked about, we mentioned, and maybe the uniform code covers it, like, they talked specifically about a qualified installer, which is something we've said, well, what if somebody does it themselves, you know, kind of thing? Or, one of the things that I noticed is they talked about thermal, solar thermal energy systems versus photovoltaic. What's the difference? I don't...
Electricity versus hot water.
And so it's those, do we want to get into that at all?
You can combine your solar with geothermal also.
Well, so there's...
Is it geothermal or is it solar?
Oh, that's different, yeah.
That's what I thought, that's what I mean.
Solar is different than geothermal, it's different than solar photovoltaic. Solar photovoltaic is, the solar panels on the roof or on the ground, you're going to generate electricity.
You can have solar thermal on a rooftop, to my knowledge. I've not ever seen a ground mounted solar thermal installation, because then it has to go from the ground mount into your house. I guess maybe it could happen, but I've never seen one, but...
I've seen a, I've seen a ground mount, but like leaning against a house.
Yeah, yes.
So, so that's, that's not a rooftop, it's, but it's right there, so it pipes right in.
But that was one of the things, do we need to get into? I'm just, you know...
Right, so vertical, if you look at vertical, there's the ground mounted solar array?
Yes.
And then on top of their garage is also solar electric panels. On the other part of the roof is solar thermal. Those are those darker panels, they don't look like the other ones.
Oh, the newer panels?
That's for heating water, yeah. Yeah, they look like panels.
Oh, so it's not like piping or anything?
Underneath it it is. I mean, it's really like a loop of water that the stuff's painted black and the sun hits it and it heats up and it absorbs the heat into the water and it's a loop into your house to heat water.
Some people use it for their pools.
Yeah, yep.
So, do we want to put that in the definitions or anything? I mean, is it considered a, it is a solar energy system?
So it's not, I don't, I don't know if they consider that solar energy though, or if they consider that solar heating.
That's what I'm asking, I guess.
Because there's no reference of it in here. Even that part where they talk about the building integrated solar energy, that's still like to generate electricity. All this stuff is to generate electricity.
As opposed to heat.
Versus the solar, versus the model solar law for like, best, the battery, battery energy storage systems, that's to store energy.
Right, so...
In that case, what's the main name of the model permit?
The unified, unified solar permit.
If that's the case, then do we want to specifically say that this does not cover solar thermal installations?
Well, that's what I'm wondering if we need to do with it.
Or do we want to include it in here? Because, here's the thing, most of them are going to do sort of solar votage, a few will do solar votage plus solar thermal. So, if we don't have it written down here, we're going to have to figure it out somewhere.
That's what I'm saying.
It's one of those things that's significantly less efficient here. I mean, obviously, right now, like, it's cold out, it's not doing anything.
Mine is freaking permanent.
But, during, but people could do it, you know, hey, I have a summer house up there, I don't care during the winter if I'm not making hot water because I'm not there. We can try to, I don't know. I guess, I don't know, I would be interested to look at the, that other solar, the other model law too and see if maybe it's referenced there, I'm not sure.
Solar model?
No, the, the energy storage system one.
But I doubt it is.
Yeah, and then the battery storage. Well, you know, it's just like, so we sit here today, but you know, what is the future going to bring? And we can't just be saying, oh, well, what we've got today is all there is.
Oh, yeah.
And, I don't know, is this, it may be antiquated, but it may be that somebody wants to do it. So I just don't want to overlook something that could easily...
Poor things could just get more efficient and work better and...
So I've been tasked with encouraging you to adapt this solar, the unified solar permit?
Yep.
So, then, is tier one going to be used for the unified solar permit? Because it has questions like, capacity of less than 25 kilowatts, not subject to architectural or history review board, does not need variance or special permit, so it doesn't need a special permit, so then it has to be tier one. Is mounted on a permanent roof or legal accessory or ground mounted on the property. A solar installation contractor complies with all licensing and other requirements and the sloped roof. So then this would just be for one. So we, then we would have to write in this to this law that if you're under one, you apply, you use a building permit and a unified solar permit.
But it said ground mounted, which is not under tier one.
Yeah, so tier one would be mounted on a permanent roof or legal accessory structure or ground mounted on the applicant's property?
Yeah, see, we, we aren't doing that. We haven't said that. We are saying tier one is roof mounted.
Yeah. Yeah.
But the, but the code does cover a lot of...
So can we do tier one A and a one B, so that one A can use this permit, so that I can get my pat on my back from my people?
Can we just say that the village requires the solar fire, or the unified solar permit to be filled out and also one installation?
And it could also be the answer is no. Right, it's a yes or no question, your answer is just no.
It's just not, just to have the information.
Right, and that's the thing, I think it's really good information either way.
Yes.
Okay, so then you...
Plays into our local law is one thing, but it's good information to, to have on file.
Certainly be good.
So those are the, those are the six questions. I think we could adopt that, right?
The board of trustees has to adopt it.
I mean, I don't mean that right now. Saying we can incorporate this into the law that you have to, that you have to...
Like, if you're going to do this, the unified permit is required, whatever you're doing, whether you're doing ground mounted or...
And then they would answer those six questions.
Or roof mounted, whatever, fill out the...
Okay, I feel like that, those aren't bad questions.
And I think as we talked last time, I for, I think it was, you mentioned that, you know, most of the places, right, you go and have Halco or somebody come and do this, they're going to fill the thing out for you, right? It's not some homeowner trying to figure out, oh my gosh, I don't understand how to do this. It's usually whoever they're contracting with, the work should be able to answer all those questions.
Do you agree with that, Mike?
Yes, because even if there is too much information for maybe a small roof project, so there's a lot of information, you don't, you still have it.
Okay.
You're going to have, you're going to have a lot of information that's going to be good for the actual special permit, that's going to answer most of your questions that the planning board is going to have, and have all that information right there.
Okay.
Then there's a ton of submission requirements, so it is going to be pretty detailed in terms of like, who the manufacturer is, the model, the configuration, the sizing, the location, the connection, how it's connected and disconnected, supply side connections, service and entrance conductors, rapid shutdown method and location and labeling, so there's a lot of them.
Can I get a, I think they need a lot of that anyways, they work with NICEG to, well, here it's NICEG, but you know, whoever, whoever they're working with, depending on how it's hooked into the system, I mean, a lot of that information is going to be needed either way. Even if it's not for us, you know, an electrician is going to need it, or NICEG is going to need it.
Whereas, going back to your solar thermal, I don't, my opinion is, I don't think that you need to handle it the same way as a regular solar array that produces electricity, because your solar thermal is actually using exchange or the heat to run what, if you run hot water out of your hot water tank, instead of it taking cold direct water and have to heat that up from 55 degrees, it's now taking warmer water, so it's basically going through an exchange.
It's like a radiator, it's like a glycol quill in a Cornell, that's exactly what it is.
You don't hook it up to the electrical grid, right?
Not at all.
No, it's a closed loop of hot water running real close to the closed loop of water from your house. So they're not mixing in, it's just, and it's not even water, it's probably glycol, I would imagine.
So, we, do we just want to refer, I think we need to reference it though somehow, and just eliminate any sort of question.
I don't think the distinction about question four is a problem, because question three of this unified solar permit is, does it need a special use permit? So even though it will be ground mounted on the residence property, it still needs a special use permit, so still won't be issued a building permit under the unified permit.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but what if you have a, I say we don't, we don't handle solar thermal the same way, but what if you have a ground mounted solar thermal, now you're still going to want to look at it for buffering and everything?
Yes.
No different, then, that's got nothing to do with the electric. You're looking at for the buffering purposes for aesthetics and everything.
Why wouldn't we just add it in? Seems like...
I was going to say, maybe, maybe, I don't know, I don't know if there's any other place to get with this, but that might be the simplest thing to do, is just say...
Yeah. Is this Mike Baker or Mike?
That's Mike Scott.
Mike Scott, is this from today, or is this your original one that you sent out?
This is the one that I cut down and done out.
Oh, I could have edited the wrong one, because a lot of the stuff I'm saying, cut that, cut that, you already cut.
And then...
There is, no, there was some stuff that you...
Some of the definitions still made its way over, like the pollinator or...
Oh, you see, oh.
I think it was seven, you definitely, seven...
Oh, yeah, no, it was there, it just, oh, yeah, it's on the back, yeah, no, I think it's...
Oh, I did do the right one?
I think you...
Suddenly I thought I was doing the wrong one.
I'd like to put in a please for another way to help us keep our documents, so we all are working for the same Rev. number. I don't know how we do that, but I have to do it in a proper job.
Didn't we do a Google doc?
As opposed to printed copies and everything, like...
Why don't we just go from the top and go through the...
Well, I was going to say, if, I don't know, if Lisa, did you want to talk about your changes first? Because I know you have some things in here that, you know, Carolyn was working on, and I know you had some comments.
I think we already decided last time that we liked Lisa's intro better.
Which was from the town.
Yeah, was there anything else?
Do we need to go in there?
I sort of changed it, the one thing I did that was different is, I thought, after reading Mike's situation where he said solar energy system and there's two types, I thought, I would prefer to say solar energy system and then do tier one solar energy system as a definition, and then a tier two as a definition. Later we talk about under, what they are.
So they are, they are already, they are already under definitions. Tier one, tier one and tier two.
They weren't.
Okay. So what?
No, I mean, that, so if you, if you look at, if you look at Mike's copy, or your copy, either one, and you go under section three, which is definitions on the first page, the very last two definitions in there are solar energy system, tier one, and what they are, tier two.
Just not formatted the same as the other.
I just, right, okay, so I would like them to be as tier...
Oh, okay.
Not include the following, but just, tier energy, just a definition, they're, make them definitions, as opposed to getting into it here, that, you know, and it's going to be a building permit requirement, which we're going to get into, of course. I just thought, just make them definitions.
So follow, follow the same formatting?
Yes.
Okay, and then if we want to explain what a, you know, residential roof mounted energy system is, we need...
Say tier one solar energy systems, resident, are residential roof mounted, residential building integrated, or solar, just, they're a definition, so that people clearly understand they fit into that category.
So then, but I do have a question before we even get there. Where do we want to include or insert solar thermal? Because the thing is, from our point of view as a planning board, we're looking at the aesthetics. You're going to want to look at, if it's mounted on a roof, is it, you know, is it going to be to code mounted on that roof and the weight and all that other stuff, because it's a heavier system? So there's reasons to review it similarly to how we review solar panels.
I need, in roof mounted, does all the things that define solar energy systems just put the word including thermal?
Because, okay, so the town did, had a separate category, and they said solar, thermal, energy, rooftop, building mounted and ground mounted, is how, so they can go wherever, but they didn't say whether they were...
You don't need to distinguish between what they're using it for.
We can just, solar energy system definition.
Right, but that's, that's to convert solar energy into electric energy, or specifically, or thermal, yeah.
Or thermal, or so, yeah, or, yeah.
That's a good one.
So we can modify, modify that.
Because every place in the document should reference what a solar energy system is, so we're not accidentally missing one, yeah.
Yeah, and, and or thermal here would be...
And solar energy system to also include solar thermal system.
So, it's, won't say just required to convert into electric energy, but also...
Or thermal.
We don't want a separate cut.
Well, here's the thing, from, from our point of view, we're looking at like, okay, where are you mounting it? What does it look like? You know, and then we're going to be looking at like...
Adjacent properties and protecting people, yes.
So, so for us, it's more of a visual thing.
Right.
You know, certainly from Mike's point of view, it's going to be a, is it safe?
Yep.
But, it's the same kind of scrutiny that they're going to be under, so I think it'd be nice to include them together.
Okay.
Because it's going to come up as a question at some point.
Is there a geothermal permit? Because now we're requiring a solar permit for geothermal.
There's not a specific geothermal permit, because most of the cases, that's handled with just a regular building permit, because the, well, what I do with the geothermal is they're required to form, fill out a notice of ground disturbance, how, you know, how much ground they disturb. But there's really nothing for me to check, other than the actual system inside, how it's hooked up. So it's handled just like if someone was to upgrade a furnace.
Furnace or something, right? Those things, there's not so much, you know, this buffering concern, or it's ground mounted, or it's on the roof, it's actually in the ground. Part of it is, the other part's in your house.
So we're going to just do solar energy systems and solar thermal?
I think, I think we can look at the definition, but yeah, I mean, the components in, to convert solar energy into electric energy, energy suitable for use, or, you know, solar energy into...
So we're just changing that definition to include the thermal.
Yeah, because that way it's referenced everywhere else, right? If you change it there, then it's already referenced in roof mounted, it's already referenced in these other areas, you don't have to then go and mess with it everywhere.
What else you got, Lisa?
Going to come up with.
What else you, what else you got?
What else have I got? Well, that was one of the ones that bothered me. And then we didn't really get into the batteries, well, we did, somewhat.
So there's a separate, there's a separate, the way that the state did it at least, there's a separate law for battery energy storage systems. That's not really part of this at all, other than I think they might have had a definition in here at one point. Oh, maybe not, though. Yeah, the battery energy storage is separate.
Yeah.
It's also a lot more simple than this one.
No, my only other concern is, I still keep feeling uncomfortable about this being an accessory building and therefore all, all of our code applies, just, you know, I just, setbacks and stuff, that bothers me a little bit.
Wanted to not be an accessory, you want it to be private setbacks?
I want it to be more stringent than maybe 10 feet from the side or whatever. That's all. I'm just worried about adjacent properties, but I, I don't know. And, and you know, each district is different. Whether we want to do it, it gets complicated, I suppose, then.
Can you, off the top of your head, I don't know, it's a...
Is it usually 25, is it 25 feet usually? Side, side of 15, I thought, right?
Accessory is 15, principal's 25, this is, I'll have to go get it, because there are different numbers for different...
District, I know, but that's, that's something else that I really...
15 plus the planning board's reviewing it for buffering, seems like a safe...
15 feet isn't much.
I know, but you don't want people to, you know, you, we don't want to completely tie people's hands at the same time.
I mean, if the point is buffering, right, I'm...
Yeah, the buffering is 15.
You know, if you look at the piece of property next to me, there's nothing there and there's not going to be anything there, because there's a natural gas line you can't build on. So if I built within 15 feet of that, maybe that would, you know, I can't anyway, but theoretically, if I could, you know, that would be fine, it wouldn't, you know, impact, you know, my neighbor on that side versus, but if it did, you know, if I put it on the other side, then there is, you know, there is a residence over there, but the board would review that and say, hmm.
Yeah, I'm trying to picture in my head a couple of different scenarios, so like, my next door neighbor, my lawn is continuous to their lawn, and if, and I'm south of them, so if they put a, a ground mounted 15 feet from our property line, it would be a pretty big glaring thing onto my property. So, I, it's contextual.
And I agree with Carolyn too, I think, I think if we change, if we said, oh, well, no, that's too close, it's got to be 50 feet, that probably impacts a lot of people. Or even if it's 25 feet, that probably impacts a lot of people. Versus if we said 15 and board review, like Carolyn said, that maybe that, that's enough.
I hear you though, I see what you're saying.
I just, I just...
Take a picture, there are going to be circumstances, but you can't make the law based on like...
No, you can't. And like, on the other side, if I were to put one 15 feet from my property line facing south, it wouldn't have an impact at all. Giant farm field and, and a, and a stream, so like, you know, no one's going to care. So it's going to be, so clearly what it is, is a, a hard measurement won't give us a satisfactory boundary. So what we're going to have to do is, can we, can we write something that gives us a guideline for discussing a visual buffer, or a space buffer? So, you know, maybe it's, maybe it's, wherever it is on your property, walk X number of feet away, and can it be seen?
Well, I guess the real thing is, is you don't want it to be capricious, you know, I mean, you, and, and that's the hard thing, and so you want, usually code, it kind of you try to avoid that, because every board is going to be different.
With the, with the 10 special permit requirements, one of them is like, you know, the aesthetic of the neighborhood or what have you, right? So there's always that catchall.
I'm just bringing it up.
I agree, it's a good point.
It's just one of the things that bothers me, that's all. Because I just think...
Thinking about it.
I haven't found anything that really addresses it, other than to get into, oh, in this district, you can only, you know, it's got to be this. And, and, and you're right, it, it depends, it just depends, but I, it...
What are the implications, Mike, of saying it's not an accessory structure? It's its own thing?
I know, I was wondering, that's...
Like, then we have to go, oh, well, if you do that, then, you know, for accessory buildings, there's these, you know, 50 things that are well defined in code. If you create something that's very similar, but you're saying it's not an accessory structure, what then do we have to go and define for that to make sure that, again, we're not put in some situation where, nope, that's an accessory structure, I can put it there, thanks, bye.
But, if we did do this specifically, it might give us the ability to put it into a contextual situation each time, I don't know, as opposed to saying it's an accessory building and therefore I could come to this point. Because that's what people will do, they'll say, well, it's an accessory, I get to go to 15 feet.
What this says for, I mean, and also it's solar in there too, for an accessory building, supporting a building clearly incidental to the principal building on the same lot and used for purposes customarily incidental to those of the principal building, such as tool sheds, gazebos, screen houses, storage, or animal shelters in which does not exceed over 400 square feet in area or 15 feet high, garages, carports, barns, solar collectors, windmills, dish antennas and other structures exceeding these limits are considered principal buildings. So it's...
Oh, it's considered a principal, or higher, if it's 15 feet, then higher, I see.
Or over 400 or higher than 15 feet.
So, that would then...
Kicks in your setbacks. Kicks in your setbacks.
Push it back.
Then we would want to think about, right, that, that's, if we're going to go with square footage, too, that impacts that, too. Depending on how you define the square footage of a ground-mounted solar.
Is it the footprint or it's...
This is the area around the two poles, but not the tilt, sorry. It's going to come up.
It is.
Of course it is. That wasn't my strong suit.
I think it was like a cube.
Right.
Should I talk about my...
Was there anything else, Lisa, or did you want to...
No, no.
I mean, it looked like that was, you know, the kind of intro is...
Oh, I guess one of the things that, when I was looking at it, well, our comprehensive plan says we basically want to foster things, you know, and advance things, but there was one thing, it was, I think it was the word encourage, and I'm thinking, I don't know whether we want to get into words like that. We want to foster, but I don't think we want to be marketing this. Let's put it that way.
I think we talked about that last time.
Yeah, and I was just saying, so I think...
I think Mike brought that up.
If we see words here that, and I don't know, but I just, it's like, yeah, we want to foster this sustainability per comprehensive plan and all that, but we have to be a little careful, I think. Which is why I wasn't really sure about this last one about decrease the cost of electricity to owners of residential.
That was one that you had added in, from the...
Yeah, from, from some, well, I just, it was on the original, and I thought, well, I guess, but do we, I mean, is that really one of our goals? You know what I mean? It isn't, I don't think.
I would say, I think that's more of a goal of the homeowner.
That's what I think.
I want to install solar so that my electric bill is less.
I didn't put a...
The village doesn't want you to install solar, so your electric bill is less.
Okay, so I didn't put a number, well, I don't think I could because of the damn formatting, but that's another matter. But I just didn't feel that that was one of our objectives.
Okay, take that one out.
Yeah.
But on the other hand, I want somebody to tell me about how we're creating, what does it mean to create synergy between solar power and the comprehensive plan?
The comprehensive plan wants you to use renewable energies, and we're fostering.
So is that, is that the synergy?
Yeah, we're synergizing by fostering.
Okay. Well, I mean...
Ouch.
No, for sure.
Give me an example of creating synergy between solar power and the village comprehensive plan.
Well, if the village comprehensive...
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I mean, I don't know what the line, but it is in the comprehensive plan, I think you brought it up last time. The comprehensive plan says, you know, we should be...
Actively encourage is the word, I brought it...
There you go, actively encouraging them, then that's the synergy between, that's what this local law, there's a synergy between this local law and the comprehensive plan and the fact that they kind of match up for, or reference each other.
If you don't like synergy, you can say, we're creating a mechanism for the approval of...
No, no, I'm fine with it, it's just, we used to get objectives from faculty members that had a lot of things thrown in there, and you'd sit down and say, what does this really mean?
That's not a real word.
What does this really mean?
Somebody said synergy, I got that.
Do you have a noun, do you have, and sometimes it didn't say a darn thing, and that's, so I come across some of this sometimes, I just think, I want to be sure we all understand what we're saying, that's all.
I mean, you could just take number two and say, to further, you know, to further the, you know, the comprehensive, the village comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm with Lisa on the use of synergy. It sounds like something from the business school.
Then I would, honestly, I would just take number three and say something like, you know, you know, to further the, the village comprehensive plan.
Cohesion?
Oh, gosh, no.
Well, all right.
Yeah, further.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be. Yeah, active accordance, yeah, something, something like that.
What did you say?
I would say further is the best way, but act in accordance, yeah. Not like synergy.
So we can pick a word.
Further, good.
Let's just do further.
So actually, if everybody likes the statement of purpose, I did put, actually, in 1, 2, 3, the fourth line down from the beginning, it is in the public interest to provide for and actively encourage, because that's what the comprehensive plan said, renewable energy systems, that's all. I would add that.
And I think it's fine if we mention that up there once, like, you know, actively encouraged there, there you go. That's, that's how active we're going to be about encouraging it.
Yes.
It's up to you as a land, you know, as a homeowner or whatever, to decide what you want to do with it.
But the original one had this decrease because of electricity, I thought.
I have another thing, and may, maybe this has been hit on, and I'm sitting at another computer trying to figure out which draft I'm looking at, but...
Yep.
We have some maybe recognition of, and I don't know what the right word, like, vestas or view sheds, in other words, visual, visual aesthetics. I just, you know, reference to...
Oh, it definitely says that.
It says it in here.
It says minimize adverse impacts on...
Oh, it says, protect...
No, neither 2 nor 3 say anything about view sheds, we should have something there.
2 is mitigate, well, it says mitigate adverse impacts on neighboring properties and on, but that doesn't...
So you could add the visual aesthetic, public health.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You could add the word visual aesthetic right before public health.
Yeah. You know, if you're driving down the road or taking a walk, you don't want, you don't want to have to look at really hideous and ugly things.
So where are we putting it? To protect the...
Visual aesthetic, public health, safety, and welfare of the village.
What is, well, actually, I'm going to, I would say this, I'd prefer to put it under adverse impacts on neighboring properties and visual there, because, yeah, because it's not, we're not protecting aesthetics.
That's right, right, to minimize...
We're minimizing impacts on aesthetics, but we're not protecting it the way we protect health, safety, and welfare.
So could it just be like mitigate adverse impacts?
Aesthetic impact.
You know, including visual aesthetics.
Of solar, or somewhere...
On neighboring properties, period, not to protect.
Somewhere in there, though, we can figure out, again, the...
Well, then, could it be at number 2?
I don't think we need to include neighboring properties. If you just say visual aesthetics, that would include neighboring properties, but it would not be limited to neighboring properties. I mean, also, consideration, if you're driving down the road or taking a walk, you know, do you see?
Yeah. We can figure out the best place for it, and we don't have to, as long as it's in one of those areas there that makes the most sense, yeah, we can try it a couple of different ways.
Okay, I suppose you could just say after minimize adverse impacts on neighboring properties and mitigate visual aesthetic issues or buffering, but we'd get into mitigate, of course. But that's all right, you could use it.
We, we'll add it in, we'll add it into an updated draft and send it out to folks and see if they like it. I don't want to try to wordsmith everything. As long as we know, hey, we need to include this either here or here, we'll figure out a good place for it.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, good, if we get rid of that cost of electricity thing, which is including single-family homes, which made no sense to me, but all right. But now that just eliminates that question. Good.
Was there anything else on yours, Lisa, that you wanted to go over?
Nope.
Thanks. Okay, I have three topics. The first is easy, and we talked about it last time, it's just what in the definitions due to, I think, was extraneous. We don't refer to active agricultural land where, in, like, I, I just did a global search for these terms.
Did you look in the document Mike gave you or the original one?
Mike.
Okay, so I bet it was, I bet it was referenced in the original one, and sure, if we're not going to have it in here...
So yeah, so they're not in these terms, they're not in the document except for the definition.
Can we help Jim out to which version he should be?
We're on the, we're on Carolyn's, Carolyn's edits, Jim.
Okay, I was just bringing that one up.
So that's just fact, farm operation, mineral soils, pollinator, perennials.
Why were those in there to begin with? I was wanting to know.
The perennials and pollinators are about, were somewhere in the original one, about preserving those types of foliage.
But that was another, that was another instance, and some of those, they actually took the definition, so they had this definition, and here you go, it's like two sentences, but then when they went to talk about, they actually copied the definition right there and just started saying, see mineral definitions. So, yeah, I mean, I think in general, if we've, if any of these definitions...
Is native perennial vegetation and pollinators.
Do we need any of these defined? Or are they defined elsewhere in the code, and that would cover it?
To include reference to that.
I don't think, I not think any of these need to be in there. Wait, I don't know if this is...
I'm on page 156 of Carolyn's version.
So it's on the back, the back of Carolyn's printout.
So I would suggest we take out native perennial vegetation, pollinator, mineral soils, farm operation.
You had active agricultural land to it. Oh, you said that was not...
Mike, wasn't used in the document.
Yeah, some, that one, that one was probably in a section that we took.
So, and then facility area is used, but it's only relevant in commercial operations, which we aren't currently really talking about in any capacity, which is actually going to be my third topic. So do we agree that we should take out, maybe pulling a back on facility area, the other 1, 2, 3, or 5 definitions?
I would say any def, I would say at the very least, any definitions like facility area, if that's not used anywhere in our document, we don't need to have...
Let's take out those five, then.
Um, but like...
Is that true?
Like, native perennial vegetation and pollinator, those are included in...
They're defined in our code.
Yeah, that's the thing.
I didn't find perennial, I didn't find pollinator in the code.
In our code?
They're cooked.
I don't see it.
They're not in our code elsewhere.
I didn't find perennial vegetation, I...
Oh, I believe you. I didn't check, I just assumed.
I mean, I know some of them are not searchable formats, so I didn't go and look through the non-searchable formats, but most of the versions online are...
So then I guess my other question would be, do we want to talk about that here? Is that really, we don't do that for any other building. Why are we talking, why, like, I love pollinators just as much as you do, maybe a little more, but I don't want to...
Why? Like, it doesn't have the specific benefits of solar.
I'm not sure I can...
I'm not making people think people who put an entire house in talk about pollinators.
I'm not sure I can, I, I, I see somebody here applying, I'm going to put in a ground monitor solar ray, and us having a discussion with them about what they're going to plant and talk about pollinators and bees, and I just don't...
Well, well, there's one thing that we might want to think about, because somebody could, if we don't insert something about planting there, they might say, yeah, I'm just going to pour a concrete pad, and suddenly you've increased the impervious area, and frankly, it's ugly and hot.
Whether or not we define pollinators...
I was just saying, pollinators there is a different story, but I, see, when it comes to definitions and some of this stuff, I think, does it hurt to keep it?
But it also has the language which Carolyn in the last meeting particularly took umbrage with, to the extent practicable.
Oh, well, that's, that's...
That's big, yeah, that should go on.
Thank you for reminding me of my umbrage.
You're saying, you're saying, you need, you're saying you should do this.
It's...
No, if...
Which is actually going to be my third point.
Okay.
Get to that, is the if you want to aspect of the law.
But I understand what you're saying about the concrete pads, but why are we only protecting native perennial vegetation?
Are we? Where, where are we protecting them?
Pollinators.
Okay, outside of the definition, I start this document, 156 of your draft, 7B, entire mutual resources, to the extent practical, tier 2 solar energy systems shall utilize and maintain native perennial vegetation to provide foresting habitat for pollinators in all appropriate areas.
And there's facility area, that's it.
I covered all of that.
It's got everything there.
At page, this 7...
It says CG on the front.
7B.
I don't, this is a 7B. Right here. Is this a CJ?
So on the very back.
7?
7B.
Oh, 7B.
Yeah, it's confusing, because there's actually a 7B on, on page 155 as well.
Page, yeah, so it's on the very back there.
156.
Under 7, I'm looking at this 7.
But I said page 156.
I know you did, but, but I just, this is just so weird.
A little bit.
On the B, 7B.
It's 7.
Yeah, so that's got everything.
Okay, I think we can leave 7B and still take out the definitions, but I don't know, I don't care. All right.
Well, I will agree that I don't like to the extent practicable, and there's sometimes where we say may, or I want us to be a little more, building permit shall be required or is, I mean, that's...
Well, I think that's, again, let's, let's finish the definition one, because I think that Carolyn wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, that's right. All right.
What's the reason to take it out? Just because we all know what it is, and it's making the document longer, or is there...
But I think you have to be careful with that sometimes. To the extent practical, okay, I wouldn't even say to the extent practicable, practicable, because that comes up sometimes. Like, for example, when we did our whole tree thing with Zach who came in and, you know, and sidewalks, he's going to have to put a sidewalk, it wasn't practical, because we have a huge ditch, and it will attach to nothing. But we made that decision and came to that conclusion. But in some cases, you would want to be able to enforce that.
So let's do what we always do, which is take out to extent practical, tier 2 owners shall utilize and maintain to, as required by the planning board. And then, that's what we do, that's what we always do, and that always works. Then you guys get to decide.
And, yeah, and...
You're taking out perennial vegetation?
No, we're just taking out the to the extent practical and 7B and adding as determined by the planning board.
So we're going to say as determined by the planning board, tier 2?
Or case B.
What about mineral soil groups, Natalie? Do they come up? Mineral soil groups?
I did not find them in the code.
No, in...
I did not, in the, I don't recall, I don't think they came up in this.
I think that's unnecessary. Mineral soil groups, 1 through 4.
Did I take out nameplates?
It's actually, so it's, it's really important when it comes to doing things with your doing, when you're doing on-farm, because there's all sorts of other, on the state level, they, there's different regulations based on your soil type.
Oh, that's why the soil type is in there.
That's why the soil type is in there. So it might be that just doesn't apply to residential level and this, you know, so there's a reason that it's there.
I was going to say, this is the thing that I'm saying, I guess, or what I was trying to get is to see, you know, before we go taking this stuff out, we do have some, you know, this whole large plot over there that perhaps will be impacted by this in some way, and you can't count on the current owners doing what they're doing, you just don't know. And so I, I'm not as keen on just going, getting rid of it, because it takes up a lot of space.
The only place in this document where the word soil is used is on page 153. Right?
I...
It's only in the definitions, not otherwise in the document.
It might be that mineral soil groups is referenced in agricultural land, and agricultural land is then referenced in...
I looked through the document, and if I didn't see it again, I was like, ah.
Yeah, it's close, but it's not, yeah, it's not the same, it's not the same thing, like mineral soil groups, groups, can't talk, apparently. It's talking...
It's definitions, but it's not in the document, so...
Yeah.
Could I back up and just say, where did you want to say to the, as determined by the planning board? You want to put it at the beginning of 7B or the end?
I would say as determined by the planning board, come, tier 2 solar energy systems shall utilize and maintain.
Okay, you want it at the beginning?
Yeah, I would put it at the beginning, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, well, I mean, I don't really care about any of this, it's not, it's not for me to take them out, I just thought, if they're not referencing anything otherwise in the document.
Oh, yeah.
I do have a question about, staying in number 7, environmental resources, we have A is the trees and B is the perennials. Do we want to acknowledge any other environmental resources? Like, does someone has a stream? Does someone have something else that needs to be maintained, protected?
We have stream issue, the stream is pretty, stream is pretty protected, isn't it, with wetland stuff?
Setbacks from it.
It all depends, I mean, if you go to a special permit, most is going to get handled through your seeker, because they're going to be un...
Stream, yeah.
They're going to be untitled actions, so it's going to require a, some type of EAF, environmental form.
Okay.
So that will involve your stream, and if also, we are already with D E C, you have a 50-foot buffer on both sides of the streams, and you...
Is that for intermittent, or is that for perennial, perennial or intermittent?
That is perennial, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and also, in some areas, you may end up into the unique natural area, which is going to require a full...
Yeah, that's another whole thing. Okay, so is there anything else that we can think of that is an environmental resource that's not in seeker, but that needs to be in this section? Because seeker doesn't care about perennials.
Is there anything related to like steep slopes conservation or anything like that that...
But that would come up if it's steep slopes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Same thing with the stream, yeah. I know that Natalie wanted to talk about tree law.
I did want to talk about the tree law, because.
We're on the section about.
Carolyn, Carolyn, don't. Oh, no.
While we're on the tree cutting, yeah, we can go over it at the end.
All right, keep going.
But I think Carolyn's right, generally, if there's definitions that we're not using.
So, but the on-farm stuff is all defined, 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 but then there's nothing in the substance of the law about on-farm.
It's just kind of whipped into tier one.
Yeah.
We wanna like, make, there's no reason to call it out as a separate category if we're not doing anything.
I, I, I think Natalie's right, I think.
Some substantive.
I think, I think my, the only thing that I saw in both, in the guidance document, they mentioned it a little bit more, but here it's on-farm solar energy systems is the only thing that we've got left in ours that, under tier one, that might reference, right, either active agricultural land or farm operation or.
But I'm like, why are we defining it, for what, to what end? Are we going to then regulate it in some way that's specific to on-farm, which is fine, which is great, but if we're not, then?
I don't think we would be doing anything, especially here in the village. With our lack of it, I don't think there would be anything special that would be, that isn't already covered.
There's a lack of it now, but it's just gonna need a building permit.
Yeah.
Currently.
Right.
Which means no.
No threshold.
No tree laws or anything.
Thanks for tree law. You wanna cut me off, don't you?
Still have to use the whole 25%.
You have the 25%.
Yeah. There's also, I'm gonna take a note, because there's also something back in.
How did it get in there?
Well, there's also something back in state law.
Something in the main document, which is what my.
Yeah, state law about how you can or cannot regulate on-farm solar. So we might not have a choice.
The model law.
The model law.
But the model law, but the model law wasn't defined, the model law was referencing state law in the, in one of these like little guidance things, yeah.
This is the nicer one.
Yeah.
Because the New York State one was different.
Oh, I'm looking at the nicer one also.
Yeah.
I never looked at the state one. So my last comment, which is a global comment, which is, if we're not gonna have tier three and tier four, I wanna go through the model law on those three, on those, on those sections right now, just see what they're talking about that we're not otherwise covering. I just don't want, like I mentioned in the email, I don't want the planning board to not have the authority that they need in any circumstance, I want, you know, so to the extent that passing laws helps clarify and give you, you know, strength to say what you want from developers or builders of solar towers. But did, so according to the model law, tier three are larger principal uses with greater impacts that require more oversight. They can up to five megawatts and 40 acres. And tier four are subject to state-level processing. So tier four, not so much I have to worry about. But for tier three, we had that long section that's gone and it's fine, it might, maybe we don't need it, but I just wanna see what we cut out, if we wanted for something that's like a lot, in larger in size. And for us, I don't think it's 40 acres, I think it's even just one acre of solar panels, you know, anything that's above, you know, a smaller localized use. So there would be, you would require review by the code officer, subject to a public hearing. Now, all special permits are subject to a public hearing, right?
Right.
So then there, that's not anything then. Pursuant to general municipal law 239, same, they would have to do that if they're, wait, no, but they would only have to do that if they were within.
If, if they meet the criteria of within a count, 500 feet of county line.
Oh, and this is the same, if required, so that's redundant, right?
Any, any county-owned property, including roads.
Okay, conditions by the planning board, application, site plan, review, and requirements. Name of installer, applicant, nameplate capacity, zoning distance, property lines for the project, including any roads. Oh, the soil, here's where the soils come in, MAC of all soils comprising the facility area, adjacent land uses and contiguous parcels have a certain radius of the site boundary, proposed changes to the landscaping of the site, including site grading, vegetation, clearing and planting, removal of large trees, access roads, exterior lighting, signage, fencing, landscaping, and screening vegetation or structures. That's actually, we're thinking about, that's if somebody were gonna grade the land for a larger project. Erosion and sediment control, which you would have to do for any building permit, Mike, yes or no?
Soil control.
Yeah, yeah. A one or three-lined electrical diagram detailing the system layout, including the solar panels, et cetera.
I was gonna say, there's a lot of that.
173, is that what page are you on?
One, it was.
174.
174, okay.
Uh, equipment specifications, operation and maintenance plan, decommission plan.
We have to.
Special use permit standards, underground requirements, vehicular paths, signage, multiple lots, lot size, setbacks, and height. So it seems, are there things here that we're gonna miss if we have only the two tiers?
The soil, the soil samples, if this is a state project.
This is below state project.
Below state project, yes.
This is below state project, so this is the third one that's being proposed, so it would be somebody coming in and saying, I'm gonna, I want solar business, but it's not state level. And do we want there to be this separate tier? Or do we feel like the planning board can cover these things? May, I mean, it's not a reach to say the planning board will cover them, it's also not a reach to put it back in a separate tier.
Soil samples as far as a building permit goes is usually on your plans and don't, they don't look very much in this area because you have the same type of, type C soil. So I don't, I don't know how to put this. It'll get, the soil type will get checked with a, with a set of stamp plans. It'll be on your set of stamp plans that, that has to be checked to find out how deep they would have to go to mount any ground-mounted arrays or anything. So I think that'll get touched on, I don't know whether you're gonna wanna require it, especially for a special permit, or you wanna make, just, I'll make sure that it's on a print, a stamped print. So I don't know whether, this is a question for that or not.
I think you don't wanna leave anything, I think you make it as specific as possible so that you don't have to be worried about thinking about it.
Well, that's what I have to go through anyway, I have to check this stuff anyway.
So like.
I think this is the same stuff as tier two, it's just a little more specific.
I was gonna say, I wonder if there's, so I guess we can either create a tier three if we want a more specific stuff, or maybe there's a couple of things that we can pick out of here that we could put in, just in the tier two, but you're not gonna say, say I wanna put a.
There's not gonna be the grading of the property and then the.
That's in tier two already.
Grading?
Yeah.
Oh, good.
So we're talking basically about ground-mounted here, right?
Like a ground-mounted system for.
Right.
Yeah, or.
Special ground-mounted.
But we're not gonna worry about grading.
Soils don't get involved with that.
It's up to us, I mean, this one says five megawatts.
How big is the area, does it give you?
It says 40 acres or less, between one and 40 acres.
Because if you get above one acre, you're going to need a full E, a full seeker, full EAF. That's gonna involve, that's gonna involve a lot of information.
But is it enough for this?
These solar systems typically occupy five to eight acres per megawatt.
Oh, my goodness.
Forty-acre cut-off utilizes a conservative estimate of the land needed for a five-megawatt project.
That's.
Is anybody gonna come to us with a five-megawatt project? And if so, do we wanna have regulations?
We can't.
Good.
Oh, with, with, with.
Yeah.
I mean.
Sundown, so maybe we should put this.
Yeah, exactly, I think you can't assume they won't, you don't wanna make this for today, you have to be thinking that a little bit.
That is one of the advantages of having Brad on board.
Exactly.
He can, he's more than qualified to review something like this.
And we don't have to write it, we can just take it from here.
Yeah.
Anything there that, we can look and say, is there anything there that we didn't like?
Yeah.
I mean, I kinda.
Even be as easy as everything required for tier two plus, boom, boom, if you don't wanna be repetitive in the requirements.
All tier two requirements.
Stuff here, underground requirements, vehicle paths.
Like our general.
Multiple lot rules, conditions.
So you'd say the tier two conditions, additional conditions would be blah, blah.
Well, and I think some of it too, I mean, some of it might be collected just on the unified solar permit. Like, I mean, the preliminary equipment specification sheet has all the panels and systems. Is that part of that process or not, that permit or not? I don't know how detailed it gets.
As far as the engineer permit?
The unified solar.
Uniform code.
The stamp plans?
Yeah.
Yeah, most, they provide most of that.
So they would, it would all be captured.
Don't provide the, the actual specs and ASVILs for everything.
So.
How many pages is the uniform code?
We decided it wasn't the uniform, the uniform solar permit.
Your invite permit.
It wasn't, it was only, it wasn't super long.
Where do you find, I mean, I sort of think I need to look at it to understand what it is.
But depending on how much information they provide when answering a question, I mean, the permit itself.
Quite a lot of the information.
How much you give them is gonna, but the permit itself isn't super long.
And a lot of it is just saying, you need to attach this, you need to attach this, you only fill out pages one and two, and pages three and four are things that you.
Attach this, attach this, those things are the long things, but, I mean, you can't. Give a short set of ASVILs for a five-megawatt.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Solar system.
I can show you what someone gave me just for a roof mount system, and it's more, it's way too much.
No.
I like, I like the idea of just, you know, future planning, make it tier three and say, you know, you know, all of tier two plus of these things, and we can go and pick out the differences between.
Two and three, and then at the next meeting, if we say, oh, well, or maybe, maybe there's something that Mike already took out because it was covered elsewhere, we can leave that out of tier three also, but I think that's probably safer.
You wanna just cut in case and I started tier three?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And see what we don't need.
Yep.
That was everything I had.
Other than vague, stuff about, stuff about being vague, we just wanna remove everywhere. I thought you had some comment about that.
Oh, well, that's, that goes without saying, but that comes.
Well, no, I thought when we started, when we started talking, yeah, the. So just in general, everywhere, yeah, if we could not do that.
Shall, will.
And I have one little thing that's. Like a, you know, a little. It's one of those pet peeves, so.
Where are we?
We're on page 155, number six. So it actually doesn't really matter what version, we're looking at number six. Number six, permitting requirements for tier one.
Yes.
So we define tier one as having three different things, residential roof-mounted solar energy systems. And then you have A, residential roof-mounted solar energy, well, it doesn't even say residential, just roof-mounted. And then two, residential building integrated solar energy systems is now kind of a sub thing of A. So we have kind of, we have three categories of tier one, and it makes me kind of feel like we need three categories under number six. A, B being solar energy systems, the building integrated, and C being the on-farm.
So if you look at the, if you look at the definitions of tier one, we've got three things, we've got residential roof-mounted, we've got residential building integrated, we've got on-farm. She's saying, when you come under six, you've got, you know, it talks about six for a little bit, then it says A, roof-mounted solar energy systems.
Yeah, and then you're like, oh, but I'm doing, I'm doing B, what is, where is my B?
I hear you, they're like, where, where's B?
Exactly, I kind of want, I like there being parallel structure.
I agree.
The one to the other.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it was there before, yes, and call it exactly the same thing.
Exactly.
Hey, wait, hold on a second, now I'm feeling something with this on-farm stuff. What if?
Uh-oh.
You build sundowns as a bit mine, a Bitcoin operation.
Can't do that, but.
And then the farm is designed and installed so it does not exceed more than 110% of the antenna for the total energy consumed by the farm operation, what if it's just an energy farm?
Is it defined by Article 25AA of the Ag and Markets Law?
Question. Natalie, question.
How many bushes will a tree?
We fell apart about their.
Forest shrub is greater than two inches.
Certain protections for on-farm energy.
Yes, that's why they're under tier one.
What are their protections?
And that's that page.
That's under the Ag and Markets Law, so.
What is that?
Which I don't know what's, chapter 69, Article 25, double A, section 305, sub A, is referencing. But those systems cannot be subject to unreasonably restrictive requirements such as site plan review, special use permits, or non-conforming use requirements.
Where is?
Say that again, please.
Reading from this thing here?
Um, I'm on 169 of the model law. On-farm solar energy systems are included under tier one because in accordance with the Ag and Markets Law section, these systems cannot be subject to unreasonably restrictive requirements such as site plan review, special use permits, or non-conforming use requirements.
Okay, I'm just wondering if there's some kind of farm that's.
So we'll see, there's a way, I'll look at that section and see.
I'm saying, like, what if that farm becomes an energy farm?
Yeah, I think Ag and.
Is that a farm under the Ag and Markets Law?
Yeah, Ag and Markets defines the farms with having a certain, you can register with Ag and Markets if you have a certain income from agricultural products.
Agricultural products, and this would not be agricultural products.
Energy's not an agricultural product, okay, okay, I just don't wanna.
Oh, I know, no, this is.
Unreasonably restricted farm op.
It has it.
Ag and Markets days, that's what I seem to remember.
It has it in there, it's got a whole bunch of definitions, like dairy products, frozen desserts, milk sanitation, foreign dairy, it's, so it does have like.
Say, did but not limited to?
I don't know.
It means nothing.
Agr, farm operations is what the definition we need to find.
Well, if somebody wants to find a loophole, they always will.
Okay.
No matter how hard we work on this.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't see a.
But I think.
I was just thinking about whether, whether there was.
You know, that's, I think we can, we need to think it through, and I think it's, that satisfies me, but somebody will always find something, if they look hard enough, or challenged probably, if they really. But it seems to me agricultural products would not be electricity or.
Yeah, now here's one thing that, maybe Natalie could get into more. So 25AA, that section, is about defining agricultural districts. So you could be in an agricultural district without being a farm, if you're declared an agricultural district.
Okay.
So that, that's something that happens on the county level.
Right.
So, you know, and, and, you know, most of us will know of that because like, you know, when you bought your house, you might have gotten a form that says, I have to acknowledge that I'm in an ag district.
Maybe that's why it says the word active.
Right, yeah, so.
Yeah, and I think, Mike and I talked about this last week too, and there's, there's some timelines on that, and it comes back to like taxes and things like that, like if you're not active for the period that.
Oh, fine.
Because you're, you're granted, you're granted that district, I think, for a timeframe where you have to be using it for, you know, those neat, well, Mike can, Mike can talk about, and if you don't do that, or if you back out, then you do have to pay the. Then you do have to pay the taxes back on that for the, however long you didn't do.
That's the Ag exemption.
That's the Ag exemption, not the agriculture district.
They can define farm operation, which I can get to after.
Great, so, so the ag district has anything to do with taxes? The Ag exemption is.
Exemption, oh, okay.
So those are different things, the ag district is a county-determined area so that anybody within that area falls under right to farm laws. And so, you know, like we just redid the districts for all of this zone, there's two districts in, in Tompkins County, and, and we just redid them in like, I wanna say, 2019. And, and we, we took some things out of the ag district that are clearly not ag use, and we put some things in that are being used ag-wise. But there's plenty of things that are in ag districts that are not ag use, so like if you have a house or a business and you happen to be next door to a farm, and you're in the ag district, you can't impede their right to farm.
So let's go over the, are you, are you good with doing all of the changes we talked about?
I was gonna say, how are we going to get this into one document that we are all working?
Because I get, I'm on it for Lisa.
Can't deal with this, I personally am not able to deal with this.
So the way to do it then is to do it all electronically, and nobody prints off any copies and, or sends back, here's my copy, Mike, here's my copy, Mike, here's my copy, Mike, then then he has to do that, there's one document that I can share with everyone electronically, but that's where you go to update it.
But when we have all this redlining stuff, it is so hard to absolutely get to it, I just find that.
As long as everyone is on board with updating a document online.
Is it gonna be Google Docs, are you saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I agree, I agree with Lisa, looking at multiple redlines and interlineations is, is really hard to follow.
You're talking to the IT director like I am fully on board, but I know his, people on the planning board have worked off paper for.
So are you with making these changes and making, creating a Google Doc? And so it'll have the changes we talked about in the.
That we're all working from.
In the process, in the beginning, we'll have the small changes we talked about throughout, we'll add tier three, and then can you also add that we're gonna require the unified permit?
I don't know if that, does that go in here or?
Yeah.
Yes, I think it has to.
Yeah, we have to adopt it.
Absolutely.
Well, but, but that's not part of the village law, that's a recommendation from the planning board to the trustees to adopt the uniform solar permit. I don't know if that's.
They didn't recommend this law to the board of trustees to codify.
But I'm, my point is, I don't know if putting the unified solar permit in the law, is it, or if it's.
No, it's in our local law.
I know, but do we recommend, hey, trustees, we recommend that you adopt the solified, the unified solar permit, and by the way, here is a solar energy local law that we recommend you.
I just assumed it'd be.
There's a specific person that needs to recommend it.
Okay, well, I was, I can either. Okay.
They could just decide.
There you go. I just didn't think it had to be in the local law, I think it's just a decision.
I would make a requirement for this permit.
Oh, to fill out, okay, okay, yeah, yes, that's fine, yeah. Add that in here, yes, one of the requirements for every solar application is.
Perfect.
A New York State unified solar permit, we have to call it that.
Yeah, good, then I get my points, thank you. All right, I'm.
Use your direction, go to the tab that says.
And that's why I chose them as my task versus like, the other one was like community, community outreach, sign five people up for ground, ground, you know, heated groundwater, I was like, how about we do the unified permit?
So, hey, before we turn it over to Natalie's tree discussion.
Yes.
It's a short tree discussion.
Anything else? She's dying.
Good, we're, we're, we're cruising along.
Okay, my question's on, well, things I just noticed as I was listening to the meeting and, and looking at Mike Scott's changes. Have we?
Is this a, are you?
So last specific section, are we on?
I'm not on the tree law specific, well, I am, okay, so we'll start, tier two, I'm on page.
We're still on the solar law.
Of Michael Scott's, this is just in general, tier two, commercial roof-mounted solar.
Wait a minute.
Roof-mounted are gonna require a special permit, which means they're gonna be subject to the tree law. Do you want to subject a roof-mounted system to the tree law? When we were first talking about the tree law, we said, well, what if it's an antenna that doesn't disturb the ground below it? Do we wanna make them do X, Y, and Z when they're not disturbing the ground?
Tier two, you're saying?
Tier two includes commercial roof-mounted solar energy systems.
Yes, it does.
I would think those should be exempt.
Except that somebody might want to cut down a tree so that it doesn't fade there.
Third, so I would exempt them from the special permit requirements, but maintain the no cutting of one-third of a lot. We have two sections of the.
Well, but we want them to have to have a special.
Yeah, why would you?
No, no, I mean.
Yes, yes, you have to get a special permit.
You have to get the special permit. The tree law says no lot in the village can cut a third or whatever the, the law.
Right.
But then also, if you get a special permit, you need to give us the plan and have the calipers and blah, 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 blah. So I would say, yes, make them get a special permit for the commercial roof-mounted, but do you want them to conform to then the requirements of the tree law as it pertains to projects that need a special permit?[1746.94]
But doesn't the tree law say as required by the planning board? They just won't require anything?
Not way that.
You cannot.
Wanted to do for.
Right, exactly.
The last person.
Yeah.
And I put it. I have something to think about.
I see.
Oh, wait, so.
We have that.
Exempt from.
Let me pull it up, hold on.
Yeah, I'd love to pull it up and have it in front of me as well.
I was gonna say.
If, if you can help direct me where it is.
Yeah, where, where is it on the website, under codes or something?
Yes.
145-27? Seven or nine? Seven, maybe. One, nine, 145.
But there's a lot more to the tree law than, than the.
27.
One that just you can't cut down.
27, I think is what it was, yeah. Trees.
Mike, are you? Conservation and planting, okay, 145-27.
Okay.
Almost find it. There we go.
Did I say?
Can't be.
Did you not update your binder, Mike?
I am constantly. I love to update my binder. There's one here.
Okay, 145-27.
I remembered it.
Page 145.
One lousy paragraph. And now we've got this extension.
145 what?
145-022, online.
Sweet.
Okay, so I would recommend 145-27C. That's the minimum tree density requirements for any major subdivision or activity that requires issuance of a special permit. And that has the tree density requirements, the tree planting plan.
Oh, oh, yes.
The tree bank.
So that's the thing you're recommending.
So you're basically saying.
We're suggesting we exempt them from that specific piece.
That specific piece.
You still can't cut down more than 25% ever.
Yes, you're still subject to B.
A is still, well, A is the purpose, but B is still true.
Had 30%, you don't have to put in.
Exactly.
That makes sense.
Specifically for these roof mounted, because there's other places where if they were doing a round mounted one.
We want to make sure they're not cutting down trees and maybe, I mean, maybe.
Maybe, or maybe not, right?
Maybe not, but I think for the roof-mounted subdivision.
What, what is? Okay, well, maybe.
145-27.
So if we were to add a.
It's page 23 on the, on the PDF.
Okay, I'm getting there, my 20, 28, okay, here we go.
Yeah, we just decided we wanted a commercial, we wanted a special permit for anything commercial.
Right.
But roof-mounted is certainly different from ground-mounted.
Did you find it?
So I guess we have to do this, an A, B, under Tier 2.
I'll go up four more pages.
Ground-mounted, residential and commercial, and then maybe B.
This is it, this is.
Is commerc.
Yeah, you just haven't started.
Roof-mounted.
I think it could be, because I think there is a reference.
It starts on the next page up.
The tree law.
And what she is suggesting is that, so here's the tree law. This is the removal of tree section, we say, yes, you still can't remove any trees. She's suggesting we go down to C and potentially.
So roof mounted.
Say, okay, well, because you're just doing this on, not impacting anything on the ground, maybe we don't hold you, this C, to the minimum tree density requirements.
Or we, we could even say under Tier 2, special permit will be required, we know that already, but residential, ground-mounted, and then commercial, roof-mounted, yeah, could just special permit.
We just want to think if you want.
There's no need.
All of it to apply.
Yeah, we don't.
Unless you really want them all to go and plant trees when they go and put up a whole ton of them.
No, they can't, no, they can't, there's no place to plant them.
Sure.
They could dig up some.
There is a ton of surface area there they could dig up and plant trees.
Have sufficient parking.
Oh, we have.
What?
There is, I get hot just thinking about that place.
That's why Target has a bulk load of handicap parking.
I should do that parking review. I'm, I'm ready.
I just target a hand.
In fact, I was about residential.
I'm pretty sure because they sold out other, like, spaces to tenants, so then in order to have enough sufficient.
Before, when the mall was like, hey, here's this mall, the mall owns it, as long as you have enough handicap spots around the parking lots, because it's all one big mall parking lot, okay, but now that Target owns that piece of their parking lot, they have to have the right number of handicap spots for theirs. CMC owns their part of the parking lot there, they have to meet the requirement. You can't just meet a global requirement all the way around the mall, they're individual lots now.
Though, and yet.
There is still a big mall lot, but it's not.
So far away at Target now.
The thing is, oh.
Open like.
I'm not, but I'm seven months pregnant. But I'm saying, if I were a handicapped person.
I know, no, I know, it's true.
I'm not gonna park halfway down the.
No, it is true.
Yeah, some of them are really.
Some of them are way past.
Yeah, it's really far away, you can, I like, I can, there's like, you've got a handicap spot here, and then I call it the money spot, it's like.
Oh, yeah.
Spot, yeah. Out of the inner twin it.
But anyway, so that was, that was my only tree comment.
And how it would relate to those that need a special permit.
After all that excitement, I was excited.
I thought it was a good point. But you were dramatic.
So, I mean, what, what do people think though? I mean, do we want to say, hey, for, you know, for commercial roof-mounted, do we want to exempt them from Section C of the.
Yes, it makes no sense.
Or do we, or do we want to put something in, I'm just, again, or do we want to put something in there that the board can waive Section C? You're not exempt from it.
Oh.
We can exempt you from it if we so choose.
Oh, wait a minute, we could ask them to plant trees elsewhere. Put them up, make a contribution to the tree bank.
Wait, but. Can, can we exempt somebody from a portion of the tree law?
Yeah, if we have it written here.
Yeah.
Then.
Not within the tree law.
Not within the tree law, you can, but from here.
From there.
We could exempt, yes.
Okay.
So we're, we're gonna fix this, yeah, we're gonna fix it this go around here with this one, that we can do that, yeah.
Is this a maybe exempt?
At the, I would say something even like we did at the discretion of the planning board.
Yeah.
Or as determined by the planning board, just like I'm gonna update on the other one. As determined by the planning board, commercial roof-mounted solar energy systems may, I'll figure out something to put in there and I'll run it past.
I think maybe.
Yeah, may.
Because you know what, again, as we were talking, it could be individual things.
Yeah.
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 It's my, I like that. And plant a tree to get you to consider the way that.
They have to, if I would.
How about in lieu of planting trees, you can put a solar canopy with parking underneath it out in your parking lot, what about that? That's like solar panels, right? You're saying.
Whatever, it's cheaper. Also, then, if we're being discretionary.
Yes.
Give residents a break, because I know you didn't want this to apply to residents, residential districts, the tree law.
Oh, you mean the ground-mounted ones?
Yeah. Well, you didn't want the tree law, the special permit, like the, the density to apply to residential areas, like what happened with your neighbor.
Right.
This would subject them to that. So you could make that the whole thing discretionary.
Okay. So because we're requiring a special permit, it automatically triggers the tree law. And now what is the impact of the tree law on all of this, when we are trying to advance the sustainable renewable energy?
So it's what happened with Zach.
You'd have to get a special permit.
The person out there to count his trees.
And he told me it was actually about 200 bucks.
It's not terrible, but who knows people's.
If they can afford.
He had trees there.
He had planted trees.
Pretend you're on, pretend you're on the, yeah, the mall lot, I mean, well.
Or just a resident.
Just a resident, but I'm just saying, I think.
We're talking if you want to apply, not the residential people.
Right.
If you don't have a lot of trees, will it now cost you even more because you have to plant trees?
I want to put up a small solar array, but I don't have any trees, so I don't meet the minimum tree density, now I have to also plant trees.
Well, so I guess the point is, is if they don't cut anything.
Right, I'm not, I've never had, I've never, well, not me, because I have plenty of trees, but say, say somebody's never had enough, they've never had enough trees.
Somebody has trees on it, I bought it that way, I put some more right there.
I wish, yeah.
Right?
If I wanted a ground-mounted solar, suddenly I'm, I'm on the hook for like, probably a bunch of trees.
Trees cost more than a solar array, and.
Well, that's the.
So maybe this is a, maybe this is a, just a, in general, as determined by the planning board, we can waive that piece of it. For, for.
Residential.
Residential or we're commercial.
For anything, yeah.
I think for any, I think it makes sense to.
Yes, I do too.
Yeah, because if somebody, I mean, right, if somebody comes in and they just haven't had trees before, you know, maybe, maybe we're a little more lenient, but right, if somebody comes in and says, well, I'm gonna put a big solar array in, and I'm gonna cut these 15 trees down.
Right.
Some of which are 100 years old.
Okay, well, now you can go plant 15 more trees next.
amend the tree law to make it.
I think we should do that anyway. It doesn't hurt though, I think we should do that anyway, but.
Every new law, make sure we can waive it.
Yes, this one we can fix now though, the other one, yeah, but I think we should do that in the tree law anyways.
Yeah, I do.
Because I, there were discussions about us having it, it never made it in there, so.
Yeah, and quite frankly, if you want to go back to that whole, are we encouraging the use of solar? Well, if you're gonna discourage it by saying, oh, you suddenly have to put in 22 more trees.
You're gonna shade your solar panel.
Right.
But then.
That seems to, yeah.
No, makes sense.
Paying a ton of money in the tree bank.
They're not more expensive than the solar panels, however.
Depends on how many trees you have to plant.
Certainly not.
I just remembered I have an IT question.
Oh, man.
That was my only tree, tree point, all right.
Okay.
So here's our.
Okay, and so then I had other things, that's where we're going.
Ah.
Okay, now we get down to it.
And I don't think there was resolution, I, I was listening to the meeting as I was listening to the resolution, so it came out in the background, but.
And which version are we dealing with, Mike?
Michael Scott's. It's mostly just things that were taken out and we don't no longer care about.
Oh.
There is a, a big discussion about pitch matching, I was in reverse, and, and that's now gone. Do we care if it matches the pitch?
I thought that's.
I think we kind of do, because there was, because there was an aesthetic reason, if you don't match the pitch, you could end up having a thing.
Yeah, the, the red house.
There is a house, there is a house up cherry that has a ground-mounted solar array where you're looking at the back of it. It's like steel monkey bars, the panels all face the other way, you can't see, you can't see the panel.
It's like the back of the bleachers.
Yeah, it really does, yeah.
It really does.
I think it's cherry, pretty sure it's cherry. Huh? Right in the front, you're driving up houses on it, right?
It would never fly.
Well, it's in the front yard, which you can't do, so, yeah, but still, it demonstrates the con, you know, say it was in the side yard even, you would, they could have easily fixed it by planting like, six trees right in front of it, it would look nice.
But it's ground-mounted, it would be a special permit.
Yeah.
So you would have some say, right?
Yes.
Isn't that in the village?
No, up that far on cherry, it's not.
What else do you have, Natalie?
Well, I, it just seemed to be omitted, so I didn't know if we.
But it's back.
Care about it.
I think we do.
I think we do, but I, that wasn't something that was covered under like, I think part of it was covered under Uniform Code about like, how, how something can extend, but it, is Uniform.
Extend half beyond height of.
But is Uniform Code covered, or is that is for fire code? Yeah.
I think it's, it's in the unified solar permit.
It's, it's a question, I think it is.
They just ask questions, they don't say whether you can or can't.
Right, yeah.
Right.
So we wanted to.
So how about this, one of the things to think about is if it's in the permit and there's a question about it, we should have an answer for that question, or a guideline for that question somewhere in our law.
If somebody's got a flat roof, they're not gonna put out permit panels that are flat.
I think there's, it's like, if it's pitched, it has to be parallel to the pitch, which the one on the red house is not parallel to the pitch.
Right.
And then if it's flat, there's different rules. I'm just looking at like the.
If structure is a sloped roof. This one says, if the structure is a sloped roof, solar panels are mounted parallel to the roof surface.
Where are you?
This is the.
It's on the permit.
This is, not subject review, is mounted on a permitted roof surface. It doesn't say anything about a flat roof, it just says, if it's a sloped roof, panels are mounted parallel to the roof surface.
So the model law does reference for flat roofs, solar panels on flat roofs shall not extend above the top of the surrounding parapet.
On the parapet, indeed.
Or more than 24 inches above the flat surface of the roof, whichever is higher.
And sometimes they say 18 inches, what, are you looking at this model, there's the neat.
The full.
I'm looking at the, I, I redlined Mike Baker's version against Mike Scott's version.
The full mo, the full model, yeah.
Natalie, it doesn't go above the parapet, or what?
24 inches above the flat surface of the roof.
Oh, so 24 inches?
It's, but it looks like that, that could be changed.
That's, that's not.
It was a gray, it was a gray.
That was a gray one, okay, so that's, that's, that's like a fill in the blank, this is kind of up to you.
Yeah, so you can, that's a pick your own adventure, but there, there was a, something for flat roofs, not that they would be stuck just having.
I think 24 is reasonable, I don't think it's a weird number, because you have to pitch it.
Not, not flat, on a flat roof.
On a flat sun, yeah.
Two feet.
Well, on a flat, on a flat roof, you might have to pitch it a lot more, I mean, they're pitched a lot more than that, so.
It isn't enough.
It's not enough.
One panel would go, you know. One panel would go, you know.
You gotta pitch it towards the sun, so.
Yeah.
You'd have to go up.
You'd only have one, you'd only have one row.
Right.
You'd have a row behind it.
Ugly already, I can tell. It's ugly.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you can.
Yeah.
Well, you can, you can mount them flat. They're just not efficient. The library, they're all mounted flat on the roof. They don't work great, but they're all mounted flat.
24 inch panel, you're going to be at 45 degrees.
Yeah.
So.
At least it's going to be four feet up, maybe, three feet.
The panels are six, six feet.
Yeah, that's what we.
Or some five feet.
Five feet tall.
Probably three feet, I think, is standard.
Why, yeah, we, I think I looked it up and it was, ugh.
Yeah, it's a 45 degree angle on a five-foot panel.
I'm not fond of flat roofs anyway, but.
Well, yeah, there's.
But we have them in the village, so we have to regulate.
I was going to say.
Flat roofs are prohibited.
No solar panels will be.
Well, I can, I can find that language. I can add it back in and we can review, we'll, we can review it next time and just see.
And we gave, I mean, maybe we didn't give up, but omitted like the nameplate capacity and size.
Yeah, we haven't gotten into all that yet.
I just don't want it to be forgotten.
You'll, you'll have that on the, on the unified solar permit.
Oh.
You'll have all that information, but if you want it.
But do we want, what do we want our code to say? Do we care?
Do we care? Do you care, really?
We definitely care. I mean, that's the main thing we care about, is the size.
But it's, it's, it's not, it's not nameplate capacity, it's size.
We did square, we did square. The thought was to do square footage versus.
Because we.
Yes.
Technology.
Correct, because the technology will change.
Technology gets better and you.
It was pretty soon have this much instead of one of these.
Square footage versus nameplate capacity.
What do you think?
We, I thought we already decided on, yes, on square footage.
I think that.
Yeah, I thought.
I just didn't remember, and, but there's no reference to that in the, in Mike Scott's redline version.
Okay, so we'll need to figure out something about square footage.
Yeah, so we can put that in there. Yeah, that should. Yeah, so that should go under like permitting requirements or.
So is our.
But, yeah, or maybe, yeah. Mike was sitting there on a Friday. He was just like, delete, delete.
Get rid of it.
So, um.
I got it down to three pages in one line. I'll just delete that line. Three pages.
Now I better add this and make, pad it up, pad it up a little bit.
So is setbacks in here?
Well, accessory, what building is the setback?
Yeah, it is, so it's just. Where does it say that? It says.
Setbacks for tier two. Page 156, on Mike Scott's. Setback.
Yep. Under standards B, number four is setback.
Accessory or principal category, it's them.
Should be set to, the stretch is within the applying zone. Okay. Okay.
Did I delete that line?
I kind of feel like.
I actually added that.
I should have.
The setbacks are a good start, but I think we need to have like, you know.
Legal room, I want some legal room.
Setbacks to meet standards, but I want somewhere in there where it can say, the planning board can say that you need to screen it if, if.
Have a.
It's a special permit. Can't you require?
But it definitely dispelling it. We had that.
I thought that was in here somewhere.
I did too. Screening, number two.
Oh.
There you go. Okay, I was going to say.
Before.
Oh, yeah, screening visibility.
Yeah.
Well, so here's the thing, though. This is, this is another one of, this is like, Carol, yeah, like, to have views minimized from it, like.
Delete to the extent.
Define minimized.
It's.
Like, I put one tree in there, that minimized it.
Yeah.
Subject will.
Right.
All right, we need to work on that one.
Just, um.
So rather than talk about having views minimized, what about the impact of views to neighbors or adjoining properties mitigated? And then the mitigations can be determined by.
As determined, oh, so you're saying tier two solar energy shall have views minimized from adjacent properties using as determined by or.
No, no, I wouldn't use the word minimize, because like you said, like one tree minimizes it, but we can say mitigated per planning board determination.
Yeah. Which we did somewhere else, right?
So it's sort of minimized.
Shall have views.
I'll come up.
Well, buffered.
Yeah.
Well, buffered.
I, I, I like, I like the word mitigated.
Yeah.
In general.
Mitigated.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's stronger, minimized, yeah.
I'm like, define minimized.
So, okay, as long as that screening piece is in there and the planning board has the power to, you know, demand certain amounts of screening, then I'm okay with the setbacks being under the accessory. That's nice and clean.
So it's basically, we have the right to require additional conditions here.
Yeah.
Buffering conditions.
We, you and I have had this conversation before, that the planning board has more power.
Than we think.
Yeah.
This is not, you know, a special, is a privilege, not a right, such a question, so.
That's one, please forget that.
Love leashes. I tell my dog all the time, love leash is a privilege.
Okay.
Those are my notes.
So you're going to clean this up and we're going to start over with a new version?
Yeah.
A Google lock?
Yeah, because I have, I already have a folder, a Google box where I do everything in there, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Good, and then he's going to give us a tutorial on how to do Google.
Aw, man.
It's easy.
LinkedIn learning.
Easy.
If you can, on comments.
Well, I was going to say.
If you know how to do these.
Well, I know, but that's too cluttery. I like, Carolyn's was easier. Is, was this Google lock? No, this was.
No, but Lisa, Lisa, you can go in and type right in there live and we could all be in there at the same time.
See what you.
I know, everybody's told me that.
We know. Lisa's making her changes. We would see it in real time.
Go and just delete it.
Use it for the.
Yeah.
Exactly.
It's not better than work.
As you're typing.
Care better, but it's a better.
That happened once.
Poor processing. Right.
Except, everybody's getting the same version.
Okay, anything else on the tree law, for the tree law? Anything else on the solar array draft law?
Okay. I can progress a little.
Let's do these out of order. I think we should change the order of these anyway. Trustee report.
Uh-oh.
There was no meaning.
There you go, bam, done. That was easy.
Wait a minute, I've lost my agenda.
Other business.
Oh, uh-oh.
I don't.
The way you said that, huh?
I was just waiting. Somebody's got to have other business.
One of the things I do want to mention is that, you know, we're in the midst of this time, again, we have two candidates who are running for trustee, and the community party, you know, is, exists basically to help them get names to get on the ballot. It's not whether you're Democrat or Republican, it's just, community party doesn't care. So, um, there is this Saturday at the old village office, any, in case anybody's listening out there, they can come by and sign the petition papers. And I got, I think we all got a note today from Ronnie Hardaway about the open house at the ADC, the council.